Or the city can call a meeting with seventy-two hours notice, but that's not considered an emergency.
No.
Consider that.
Special, that would be.
Especially, but we can call those at any time as long as there's a seventy-two hour.
Yes.
Okay.
And you have to have a quorum of council to apply.
Superquorum?
No. To get the special meeting call without the mayor calling it.
Right.
You need a quorum of city council to do that.
But.
To schedule the meeting.
But do you still not need a superquorum to hold the actual meeting?
Under your.
State meetings?
Yes, under your.
You need a quorum to call the meeting, but you need a superquorum to conduct the meeting.
Give me one second on the meetings question. Okay, so. So this is where, and I think we had this discussion probably many years ago, but. So since you've become a home rule city, your city charter says what is required in terms of a quorum for a meeting. And so the only time you need that special meeting is for the imposition of taxes. Okay? Otherwise, three members constitutes a quorum. You have in your code of ordinances these other provisions about. Special meetings. So, you know, if you, they're more stringent than your city charter. Okay?
Which means that we can, council can change.
The ordinances.
The ordinances to align with our charters, which is three.
And that was the recommendation a couple of years ago.
Anything else on open meetings, I counsel? Okay, item fifteen needs to be corrected. You need to scratch out Mayor Allen's appointment. That's incorrect. But I do want to share with council that Councilwoman Williams was appointed December two thousand seventeen. And this was simply to fulfill a twelve-month period, if that be what council's desire. So I will read this with a correction. Discuss, consider, and approve city council selection of Councilwoman Williams as mayor pro temp through December two thousand eighteen. Based on her December two thousand seventeen appointment, but what's the will of council, Councilwoman Wallace?
Well, Mayor, before you take council discussion, there is a legal point that I need to make.
Sure.
So. The mayor pro temp should be selected as soon as possible after the installation of. The persons that have been elected to council each year, so it happens once a year, usually in May, but maybe in June. So the term is actually from whenever you select the mayor pro temp until after the next city election when the new members are installed. And so, so even though last year was off, you will want to, whoever you, the city council makes that selection. So whoever the city council selects would serve until after the election when that person, the new person is voted on.
Okay. What's the will of council? Councilwoman Wallace, you have.
Well, I want, I just want to read verbatim, said each year after the first regular meeting of the city council, after the newly elected official have been inducted into office or as soon as practicable thereafter. The city council shall select one of the council members who shall be known and designated as mayor pro temp and shall continue to hold the title and often till a successor is appointed. But shall receive an extra pay by reason of being or acting mayor pro temp. So I know the agenda, since we were scratching out Mayor Allen's appointment, I think, and council, if I'm not mistaken, we can now discuss who's going to be the next mayor pro temp.
Yes, you can, you can actually select this.
Um, Mayor Allen, I would like to nominate Mr. Kenton Jones as our next, um, mayor pro temp.
Second.
Okay, so it's been properly moved and seconded, that Councilman Jones be the next mayor pro temp. You heard the motion, ready for the questions?
I have it ready, miss.
Okay.
In our process that you, that you just read, Councilman Wallace, it talks about seniority, and I'm the next person in line. So I would be the next person recommended in our ordinances.
I'm not sure if the word seniority.
Is not in the seniority.
What?
Are you reading from the charter, Councilmember?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it doesn't fit.
I don't see anything about seniority.
Yeah, it's not in the city charter.
The previous practice, I don't know if it's in the charter now, but the previous practice has been to go with the most senior, senior.
Councilman.
And it's been, is a, is been a rotation, so I think that's what Councilman Roland is giving to.
Right, but keep in mind, Councilman Roland and Councilman Jones were elected at the same time. Councilman Roland had been off, so there was no continuing seniority. They both came on the same day, same time.
Whatever your practice, it depends on what motion you make and.
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
If it gets three votes.
Okay. Call for the questions?
Questions?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes had it, Councilman Jones is our next mayor pro temp. Item sixteen, discuss, consider, Mr. Johnson did item sixteen, so I think we're okay there. Item seventeen, discuss, consider, and take action for city council to have login access to city computers based on approval of background check. That's what I put on, but in following up on it, I did find out that I neglected, and Ms. Dickey addressed it earlier. Council for years has been getting an iPad, and the purpose of this when it first came up was because council needed access to computers. Well, my concern, and it's been echoed by council, is there's too many, all residents personally identifiable information on those computers. And I disagree with council or even myself having access to them, but because council did receive iPads. With the exception of, I believe, Councilman Jones and Councilman Wallace, which Ms. Dickey, you said you're going to take care of that. So with, with, with that in mind.
I don't have one.
As well as whatever, the iPad should take care of this, because I, that's not going to happen. There's state and federal laws on access to people's personal information. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, council? Uh, I know you feel one way, but the reason why it's on the agenda is because you, so, so we're, well, I don't know what law, you've been talking about laws the whole, for the last two times it's been on the agenda. We're asking for a login. Every computer has a guest, they have the person whose computer, Ms. Dickey can log into any of the computers. We're simply saying that, and it's not to have an iPad, if we come in and need to print a document that we got from TML, a document from the attorney, or a document from somewhere, there's a computer in the front. That we can log into, that puts our information that says, hey, Brian Roland logged in for five minutes to print something, and he's out. And so whatever the mayor keeps referring to, we still haven't seen it in writing yet, and our attorney did not, hasn't said anything about it either. So we're simply asking for login information, a login password that can be assigned to us, that if we run in. To the, to the building, that we can, if the computer's not being used, that we can log in, print our information we need, because we need to serve the citizens just as everyone else.
Well, the, my office is at one end of the building, and I use wireless to print at the front, so we can get you that wireless. Am I right, Ms. Dickey? If it's all about printing, you can print from your iPad or your cellphone, and we can get you the wireless to the printer. Councilman Jones?
So you referred to, Mayor Allen referred to a state law. It actually is a state law, but the state law allows each person to have their own individual login, regardless of what city that you're a part of. So then that was, we're a city and local, that meaning that we, the computers are in there, would be city computers, and there'd be a Y-drive in which everyone shares, like the whole office, including Ms. Dickey, all the workers. But when you log on to the computer, it's only you, whatever you've been doing, all those kinds of things. So even though Ms. Dickey might have been on the computer before me, once she logged out, the information is no longer there. Once you got, uh, teachers and things, that's us, the computers work the same way. Once you log in, you don't need your own personal login, and all we've done is ask for this, because I know several times in which we'll be running to the meetings, it's like, oh, let us print something. Or getting ready to go forth to a conference and things of that sort. We just want to be able to assess, see the computers be able to print and go on without, not worry about deep personal private information.
Just for clarification.
Sure.
Being able to, like, I'm missing, I'm going to beat the dead horse, but logging on to the computer doesn't give us access to the files that you're, having, having a login doesn't give us access to the files of the citizen. So if I was to, like, if I was to log on to Councilman Roland's computer right now under his dashboard, if I created my own login on his computer, only thing that would come up is the information that I put under my name of that computer. So whereas Ms. Dickey can log in to her computer, and she's going to have access to all the, all the parameters under the city secretary. But Ms. Cortez could go login right behind her, and she won't be able to see the same thing that Ms. Dickey does. So I think there's some confusion about how the login system works, but.
It's possible for us to log in without having access to people's personal information. Uh, for example, you log in because you want to print something from an email or some other source. When you go to that source, you leave the city system, and if your system is infected, you're infecting ours. That's how hacking works, for those of you who don't understand it. If all you want to do is print something, that means you have to go from the city computer to some email or some other source outside of the city. Which if it is infected, we can no longer hold individuals responsible for that computer if all of you are running through them. If all it is is about computer access, the city has bought all but to, hold on, council, I didn't speak when you were speaking, please, I was just a little rude here. If you, if you simply want to print something, and the city's paying for you to have access to the computer that maybe you do or don't have at home, then you have access. You alleviate security issues. We have had zero problems here, because we haven't been allowing that. There've been a couple of times when I saw a couple of council people sitting in those chairs, and it bothered me. And that's when this hit the agenda, because there are security concerns, and if you don't understand federal privacy and security identity theft laws, you might want to look them up. Because the city can be liable if one person believes, they don't have to prove it, they just have to believe that they became a victim. Because we opened up their system to you guys when the city's providing you access to those systems. That's, that's, council, are there some security concerns at all in your mind?
So, uh, there, just to answer a couple of questions about whether or not there are state and federal laws. That require the city to have secure information electronically and physically stored. Yes, there are numerous state laws and federal laws, depending on the category of information. There are computers that the chief of police and the police staff have access to, that it would be a crime if you even go and mess with their computer. So that is a real concern. If, and you're right, you have, you have to have a mechanism to see email, to communicate, and so on with the city, to fulfill your role as a council member in today's world. But in terms of how you actually use equipment, city-owned equipment, that is a policy issue. And so if it were that city council members wanted to have desktop computers in which to do city business and have city log-ons. Then you would also be saying you want to fund what would be necessary to ensure that the security protocols are in place. So that you do only have access to information that is not otherwise confidential and private under state and federal law. So there is a way to do it, but there is a cost, and there's a maintenance cost, because small cities don't have IT staff. And so in terms of running reports, seeing what people are doing and all that kind of stuff, they don't have the resources to pay for that. So.
Awesome, Councilman Jones?
Counsel, what's the difference? Because I feel like we're putting ourselves in more at risk, because I know a couple of times when me and Brian had to print out last minute information to go travel. Ms. Dickey actually had to log into the computer for us to go find, to go do the research. So what's the difference between Ms. Dickey having a person login, which goes to every computer, and Ms. Cortez and all the other?
You, you don't mean personal, you mean a city login?
Yeah, city login.
Yeah, city.
What's the difference between her having a city login and me having one?
The difference is that she's a city employee, it's up, to perform her duties, she has to have access to certain electronic information, because of how the city operates. City council members, it's a policy issue, whether, you know, for the most part, there are some cities in this Houston metro area where city council members actually have an office. That they can come in with a desk and stuff, and they can do what they want to do. But they also have a certain server that information is on, that is being stored for them. And there's access for the city, so they can go in and get any records that you are creating, or your record history, so they can reply to public information requests. So, you know, there's a difference, but like I said, you can still have computers for city council members. It's a matter of whether or not you want to have the resources to ensure that all of the secure information, like human resources information, water account information, financial information. All of that information stays secure, and people who don't, aren't supposed to be authorized to access, don't access.
Okay, and so my next question would be, making sure that no one else is authorized to do it. I think iPads are pretty expensive, and as it's been stated, you know, it's well in over my head, I never worked through IT or none of those things. So how would we go about processing, like comparing what it is for us to be able to print and things of that sort, rather than not?
You would make a motion that the mayor put an item on the agenda and prepare information on the cost and the process to have whatever system you want to put in place.
Okay, so you heard all the previous problems in which we have.
I know, and if it's not done, then three of you need to apply to have a special meeting to consider that information. And if you wanted to authorize a third party to prepare that information for you to present this to council, you have the authority to do that. You could hire a consultant to prepare a plan to do that.
Councilwoman Williams?
Um, Ms. Dickey, do we have any available laptops or available computers that we already have? That we could set up, maybe on that table right there, or, or somewhere?
We have one. That I, I think we had discussed in a previous meeting that I could send and have cleaned, where it's just straight internet access. Maybe even to a wireless printer, so it wouldn't have any access to.
The server.
City systems or the city server, anything of that sort, and we could set it up with a wireless printer.
And that would give council all the access that you've heard that they need up here to be able to print and.
Correct.
Online and all that?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Roland?
I, I, I'm trying to figure out if we're asking, what we asking for. This agenda item asks for login access for city councils to use the computer that we can make a motion on and easily move forward. My, what I've heard in the, the, from the attorney and from council and the mayor. We need a computer to be able to look up things on the internet, Word documents, Word and Excel to be able to put things together like we have. Those, those, we have a city email already. The things that we're asking for, I'm trying to find out, what is this thing about going on to these computers that we don't even have access to? And why are we talking about data breach? If it's a data breach, it don't matter, it'll tell you who was logged in, first of all. Second of all, that doesn't impact what we're trying to do, and obviously, as we're, we're not employees, but we're city council people, and we would be held to the same computer guidelines that are set, set up for city employees that have to do with the computer. And so I'm not understanding why would the, the back and forth between. Customers, water bills, and all these, all the different things that we're talking about, when we're simply asking for a, a computer that's connected to a printer. That we can come in and move the agenda of the city. And so, Mr. Mayor, I move that we take action for city council to have login access to the front computer. When council needs, needs to do city business.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded, that council have access to the front computers.
Login access.
Login access to the front computers. And would you finish that before me, council? Front computers.
To the front computers to be able to handle city of Prairie View business. Yeah, I didn't say the rest of that.
So are you leaving out on approval of background checks, or you're saying?
If, if we don't have it, then we shouldn't, we shouldn't be up here, so yeah, I'm leaving it out.
You don't go through a background check to be elected, you should know that.
Okay.
Okay, to conduct city business, right?
Yes, city business.
Okay. You heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Questions?
I'm ready, Miss Councilwoman Williams?
My next question is, what computer do we have in the front that would be really available for us to use? Because Ms. Cortez is on one, and then Ms. Hayes is on the other one, so are we going to like have a time that, that is, I mean, specified? Because I've never been here when neither one of them were on the computer, actually. Um, so when would we, when would we use the front computers?
I mean, when, when, when applicable, I mean, we, we don't need a timeframe, because I don't think many of us come in during the third hours when they're working, or none of us are kicking them off the computer. But we're just, again, whether the computer be, um, a login access gives us login, to log into any of the computers that are available. That belong, other than the police computers, that have, that, that we can use, and so I don't think we need to schedule for computer time. I just think that we, we are. Yeah, so that was, I, I just.
Are, are we agreeing that this will not happen during normal business hours?
No, we're not.
Well.
Call for the question.
That it's, it's not going to happen.
Call for the question.
During normal business hours, because you don't control the employees.
I'll call for the question.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Discuss, consider, and take action to form a citizens advisory committee.
He didn't ask, but nade for me.
Oh, sorry about that. Item eighteen, discuss, consider, and take action to form a citizens advisory committee, Councilman Randall.
Okay, um, this, this is pretty simple, I think, receiving feedback from the community is important. I think forming a citizens advisory committee and taking people from the various, you know, sectors of the community and having them bring their voices from their community to us. Will give us, give us an opportunity, kind of guide the city, you know, in, in collaboration with the vision of, you know, the general consensus. Because we can, you know, we can, um, we can hear the voices and the needs, because they, they talk to each other more than they talk to us. And so, you know, getting somebody from the different neighborhoods and the different sectors of the community and putting them at one table, letting them converse about the different issues, allowing them the opportunity to bring it to us. Um, this, I feel it's kind of moved the city in a direction where, you know, we're, we're working hand in hand with, with the people of our community.
Okay, Councilman.
Uh, I'm supportive of the initiative and things going forward, but is there a way like we can make it, uh, so I've seen like, uh, in different cities that have civic club organizations, where basically you break down the city in different parts. And you have like a key leader that is a part of the community to then come back in, report about different issues and different problems.
Well, the, the motion is, or as it's stated, is just to form it, and then you get into those particulars.
We can change it randomly, but you know, the city, the city's already broken up into, into neighborhoods, you know what I'm saying? And so most of the neighborhoods have homeowners associations, and, you know.
So you want to make a motion, council? Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Roland? I move that we take action on forming a citizens advisory council.
Second.
Do I need to, well, since it's a committee.
So, so.
Okay. Citizens Advisory Committee, uh, spearheaded by Councilman Randall, would be my amendment.
Okay, so we've properly moved and seconded that the council take action to form a citizens advisory committee spearheaded by Councilman Randall. You heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Questions?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes had it. Number nineteen, discuss, consider, and take action on the interlocal agreements of Walla County, Councilwoman Williams, Roland, and Ms. Dickey.
So we got the, me and Councilman Jones, we got the interlocal agreements from counties that is, Zuhon. I don't know if y'all had the time to look over it, but. Yeah, so it, on the first page, it's kind of discusses, um, the history of the interlocal agreement. And it goes through, you know, the basic terms and whatnot, and it had nothing for, uh, nothing currently has been signed for us, so, you know. It had to be, it had to be discussion on the forever of this agreement, but I mean, now we have it in our faces.
I asked it to bring the, I think council have asked for it to be on the agenda, we brought it over, um, from, from other discussions, um, I think. But the question, I guess, we need to find out from the mayor is, this is, it was dated November fifteenth, twenty seventeen. Can you give us some, some information on why, or where we at with the process?
We're not, I've asked for it from the county judge and the county engineer, probably at least four times each separately. And in checking, I'm finding out that some of the other surrounding cities have problems and have not signed it. I spoke with, as recent as today, Attorney Hayes, and she made mention, and she obviously has not had an opportunity to review it. So that's where we are with it. We've been trying to ask the council, I mean, county commissioners, and the reason council, city councilwoman Williams' name is on there. Is because she's been going over there talking to them for about a year now, nine months, something like that. So that's where we are with the process. So.
Mayor.
Once we, yes?
Mayor, council, I also wanted to know, based on how this agenda item is worded, you would not be able to prove the two interlocals that are in the packet today. Because the agenda doesn't state what the interlocals are for. Okay, so, which was a little confusing even for me to understand, um, how many agreements there were and what they were about. But I, I would say, just so you know, we're, what I've reviewed. But I, I would say, just so you know, we're, what I've reviewed today in these agreements, there are some provisions that are problematic, just from the statutory standpoint, what's required for interlocals for services between one entity and another, and the other is on the, uh, the, um, dispute that has been going on with the county, uh, from the floods and the washout of a certain road that there's a dispute about it, it's the states or the counties, but we do know it's not the cities. So you certainly would not want to agree to pay for a road that is not a city road in any way, shape, or form, uh, because that would be a gift of public funds. So it wasn't clear to me, um, if, um, in terms of the project site on one of them, if they were still talking about that road, or if they're talking about something else. So we do need to have some further discussion about the agreements themselves and what the scope of the agreements.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, Councilman Randall?
So, um, does that mean you're going to, you're going to review this, you're going to make like recommendations on this?
Yeah, so the one, the one that is the general one or the primary one, that says it's a project by project basis, the, the issue is about the compensation and whether or not the compensation is fair and reasonable for the services that are provided.
Right.
Uh, and of course, um, I, I think there's some new wording that has to take place, because you may, and I don't know what prior discussions have taken place, you may want to have some, um, parameters for which county roads and the city limits you are interested in participating in from a budgetary standpoint.
So I guess, I guess my question's more about the, uh, I guess the process going forward, so there, there are issues in, in the interlocal agreement that, that, um...
With the wording.
With the wording, so do we amend the wording to how we see fit, and we send it back to them for approval, and then they send it back saying, yeah, and then, then it comes back, like, is it like a negotiation? How does that work?
Yeah, that's exactly, you know, it would go from me to their council, which is the district attorney's office.
Right.
And they would look at it, and they would, uh, we might have to discuss in detail, you know, why it has to change, but anyway, they would come back to you revised in some way. Otherwise, like, I was like, I wouldn't recommend that you approve the ones that are in the packet today.
Right, okay, I was trying to clarify, clarify on how the download works.
Also, Ms. Lee, how do we, or how do we go about, because we know there's been some discrepancies as to the county claiming that there are certain roads that are not county roads, and they've been county roads for years. How do we go about, um, rectifying that, making sure that, um, is correct? For instance, Oomah Road, Oomah Road's always been a county road, now all of a sudden it's a city road.
So if it's, if...